We will begin the Eastern Board of Trustees meeting for February 21st, 2022 at 7:40 PM. In attendance, we have our Director Jennifer DeCarlo, myself, President Linda Borden, Mary Jane Connor, Nellie Lovenduski, Peter Reed, Patricia Mcfee, I'm sorry Patricia Mcfee, and absent we have Chelsea Henderson and John O'Brien. So we have a quorum for our meeting today and we'll begin with a review of the minutes. Well, first I should ask Jennifer, is there any public in attendance? Jennifer, is there any public in attendance?
Let me check. It does not look like it, no.
All right, so as we have no public in attendance, then there'll be no public comments at this time. If somebody joins us, let us know, and if they have any comments, we could accommodate them at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So we will start with our minutes from the previous regular meeting on January 17th. Nellie emailed them to all the trustees, so I hope everybody's had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes from anyone? Okay, hearing now what changes, may I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted by Nellie?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented by now.
I'll second that motion, it's Mary Jane.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, next we have the Treasurer's Report. Peter has also provided us with a written Treasurer's Report by email. So anybody have any questions for Peter about the Treasurer's Report? Well, we had a little music, but I don't think we have any questions. Peter, do you have anything that you want to point out in particular about the Treasurer's Report?
One thing I just want to point out is that basically we've got the bulk of our money now because both the Greenwood School District and the Town of Easton have sent in their contributions. So that's the bulk, that's the main funding. We'll still probably get some grants and some other funds coming in, but what you got is what we're dealing with.
Okay. So no further questions or no questions, may I have a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report, please?
Patricia moves to accept the Treasurer's Report.
And the second?
Mary Jane, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted by Peter. Moving on to the next part of our minute, our agenda, President's Report. Very short President's Report. I think you have all been receiving some emails from Sal's. And if you've been watching the news, you notice that a lot of challenges to various books for various reasons have been happening across the United States, challenging to remove books from libraries or from school districts. So what Sal's is recommending is in order to be prepared for a challenge of that nature, we should just review our library collection development policy and our challenge policy. So that's what Jennifer and I decided we would tackle as the next policy to review. And you've received a copy of our current one and a couple of examples that I passed on from Sarah Dallas of other ones. So we'll be discussing that later. And that's all I really have for my report. Jennifer, Director's Report is next.
All right, I really tried to abbreviate my notes that I sent out to the trustees. So I tried to pick out things that I thought would be important to the public. So first I'd like to say that we have a GEMBA and I'm trying, I have it prepared for loan to the patrons. And we have it loaned out already for somebody who's doing a long-term drumming class. And when that comes back, I will probably do a news release to tell the public about it. And that is nice that it's already in use.
Right.
Yes. Then I decided to pause Story Hour for the month of February because the COVID numbers are still, are they, you know, were still too high. And I will, I did put a flyer on social media to tell the public about this and our website. Excuse me. There was so much interest in our hand drum class for seniors that Chelsea did in January that we decided to do a February hand drum class. And nine folks signed up for the class. So they've been having a blast down in the meeting room, it's been nice.
Jennifer, is it still senior citizens?
Yes, it's still seniors, but it wasn't a criteria for the class, but it just happened that it's, it is senior citizens still. So, and you know, these folks are like, oh, are you going to do more classes? But we, we know that it's a popular thing, people want it. But I said, you know, it's all depends on Chelsea's availability, you know, she's a busy lady. So we're just going to do the February class. And then if the program committee decides they want to do this at another point this year, we'll have to see what Chelsea's availability is. And let's see what else. I, Chelsea was working on the Stuart's Match Grant and we have chosen Hot Club of Saratoga to be our performers for the summer reading program. That will be one of our events and we're still waiting to hear from, to, you know, to hear back from Stuart's. So it'd be nice if they would be nice to Eastern Library. So we hope we'll be successful in that. And Spectrum didn't install on February 1st to upgrade our internet. Our library now has five IP addresses and our speed has doubled to 200 Mbps. And we also got a new switch for the modem. So it is nice and fast now, so.
Yeah, congratulations getting that done, yeah.
Yeah, it was a long time coming. Our proposition is out on the circulation desk for signatures for the school packs. So if any of the board members are Greenwood School taxpayers, please come in and sign it.
You need 25, right?
We need 25 signatures, yeah. And I subscribe to a one-year Zoom communications for the library to have because of COVID and our meetings. It's been helpful. And, oh, we were supposed to have a program in March with Tim O'Shea. He is an Irish performer and he decided, I had him booked and he decided that he is not going to come to the United States this year. So our concert was canceled, but the person who is responsible for booking him, she said, well, I have two performers who can take his place. And I said, oh, wonderful. So we now have a concert with Tim Wass Shagler and Chris Carey and they're both from Saratoga. And it's still going to be Irish music. It's going to be March and it's a confirmed concert and it's going to be March 19th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. It's going to be original folk and Irish music at Burton Hall.
Wonderful.
Sounds great, so.
Exciting.
And we hired a cleaner and she began on February 10th, so yay. And that proves my Director's Report.
Thank you, sounds like you've been very, very busy in addition to all the stuff that I know you didn't tell us, but really busy Jennifer, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I wanted to.
Can I bring up a couple of questions on the Director's Report?
You may, yes.
Thank you. Zoom subscription, you said it's $15 a month, is there a, is that just going to be billed on the charge card?
I gave you the invoice for it. I should have given you the invoice for it, you didn't get it?
Probably, I think I did, I'll have to look and see.
All right, I will double check that.
Now is, okay. Is that, there's no, you know, startup fee or, you know, it's just, they're starting billing us $15 a month?
It's not $15 a month, it was a one price. It's actually like, I want to say it was a lesser price if you did it for one year. I can't really remember what it was if you did it for one year, but it was, it cost less to do it for one year.
Okay.
But it is $15.99 if you do it monthly. I want to say it's like $12.99 a month if you do it for one year, but you pay for the year upfront. And then they, they charged, like, they, they will charge your card the following year to renew it, but you can go in and cancel the subscription if you don't want it.
Okay.
So we just have to remember to cancel the subscription. So, but, um, yes, I'm pretty sure I gave you the invoice, but I'll look for the invoice again.
Okay, I'll double check if I haven't, don't see it, I'll get back to you.
Okay, did you have another question?
Oh, I got seven.
Okay. Go ahead.
Spectrum, the internet, that's on the charge card, correct?
I did not give them payments.
I mean, we already are paying Spectrum for the telephone service. So I'm assuming.
Well, I'm assuming they're going to give us an invoice for it.
I figured it would probably be on the, probably just add double bill, but.
Yeah, I have not, I did not give them a charge card for Spectrum, no. So I'm just, I think we're just going to look for an invoice for that.
I agree, Peter, they'll probably add it right onto the bill. I know we added, we had phone and internet and added TV and they just added it all onto the same bill, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking they're going to do, but I just figured I'd ask.
Keep your eye out for it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, and Jennifer, this isn't anything to do with your report, I just need to remind you, I need the hours, whether you can get them or somebody in the staff, you know, you can allocate to give me hours, everybody works. I need to pay the staff.
And I had a question that goes along because I, I tried to remember this, but did we make a policy a couple of years ago that when there's a winter storm and we have to close, that the staff that was working that night will get paid?
No, we did not.
Okay.
No.
I think it's something we should really consider. You know, like, and I thought we had talked about it when we were talking about other things. So I, that was just, you know, February 3rd was the first time we had to close this year, I think. And then just, and it just came to my mind to follow up on that. So something to talk about in the future, I think we should consider that as part of what we do.
Okay, so the next one of the policies, well, I was going to say after we get through the policy with the collection, maybe we can look at the, you know, that policy next.
Okay.
Okay.
I know, when you look at the annual report, it's like policy, policy, policy. And, and, and it's like we're saying, yes, 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 yeah. Thanks to you. One more policy.
It's a lot easier to, to, I think amend policies than it is to create brand new ones.
Okay, thanks for the report.
Any other questions?
A lot, a lot achieved last month, you know, like big stuff. The computer, the, the.
Cleaner.
Cleaner, you know, just a lot of good stuff.
Did you have any more questions?
One question here, while you're gone, I'm assuming you've got somebody in the staff who will take care of the bills or at least give me the bills so I can pay them or review them or?
I will talk to probably Emery Sandor to keep an eye open on the mail. Barb, she's only there on Thursday nights and, you know, she's got a full-time job and I won't bother her with it, but I'll probably talk to both Doris and Emery's because they're the ones who probably will be there the most, so.
Okay.
So I will talk to them about that, yes.
Okay, we probably should, after this thing we're all straightened out, should set up some kind of procedure like that. So who handles it? Well, you're temporarily indisposed.
Yeah, we should.
Another policy?
Yes, it sounds like it.
Oh, why now, what's another policy, you know? One more.
So then we can move on to the next item on the agenda would be our old business and talking about policies. Jennifer and I worked on the Eastern Library Accident Procedure Policy. We talked about it at our last meeting. We realized that it should mesh with another policy we have for emergency preparedness, which already had a great deal of information about what to do if there's an accident in the library. So the one that Jennifer and I sent you is very much the same as the one that's in our emergency preparedness policy. And do you guys have any questions about that policy or any changes or anything you want to discuss on that?
I thought it looked good.
Yep, so we just vote on it?
The only changes Linda that I made, which I forgot to mention to you, is it's exactly the same. I mean, well, I did, like, change the title to it, but I pretty much copied and pasted from our disaster policy. But the part that I added to was where we need to alert the library director and that's what's in the disaster policy. But in this accident policy, I said twice, it's kind of the same thing. It's number, like, under the patronate involved injury. It is number eight. It says, if the accident occurs when the library director is off duty, be sure to contact the library director. And then I said, if the director is unavailable, contact a trustee. That is the sentence I added in. If the director is unavailable, contact a trustee. And then I did the same exact thing for the library staff member involved injury illness and it's number five, I believe. If the director is unavailable, contact a trustee, I hope that was okay to do.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that Jennifer and it made perfect sense that if they can't get the director, they should at least alert a trustee who would then follow up on it, yeah.
When we go to, like, update the disaster policy, we need to remember to make that change. As if we can remember, it's like page 30.
Right.
Go ahead and put a sticky note on it right now. And then when we get to it, we'll remember, that's the only way it'll happen.
I know, I know.
Yes, so anybody have any questions before I ask for a vote on this? Anybody have another question?
Can I just ask for clarification? So.
So I'm, I'm just laughing because with all these policies, it's so confusing, Nellie, it's so confusing.
So I wrote down here that it, that you guys had decided that the accident procedure policy and the emergency preparedness policy should mesh together. But then I also heard you say it's, it's part of the disaster policy as well. So should I, should I put in there that?
Well, it's the same thing.
It is, so, okay.
So Jennifer, I know why Nellie's confused. What, what is the official term of the disaster policy, emergency preparedness policy? She's looking for the real name of that.
Okay, let me look at my cellphone and I can tell you, look at these, but I just have to get to our website.
So are you saying that the emergency preparedness policy, the disaster policy are actually the same thing?
Yes, but we've got to find out what the proper name of it is, Nellie.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's right.
Yeah, the, this, you know, the state, we wrote that this summer and the state referred to it both ways and.
Gotcha.
So it is called the disaster plan policy. It's not the emergency preparedness policy, it's called the disaster plan policy, but they're the same thing.
Okay, great, thank you, that's perfect, now I got it for my notes.
Yep, it's on our website under policies.
All right, and it's on the website.
Yes.
Perfect.
So may I have a motion to accept the accident procedure policy to update it to the one Jennifer emailed us all recently?
I'll motion to accept this policy.
Patricia will second.
Oh, I got Patricia. Thank you. So we're going to move on to our new business section of the meeting now. First thing is to review and vote on the annual report. This report was prepared by Jennifer and Peter. It needs to be done each year, the board has to review it, vote on it, and then it can be submitted by our Director to the state. So we have to approve that we agree with the annual report. So any comments on the annual report or questions? Or Jennifer, do you want to present anything on it?
Well, I know that I emailed the entire report to the board for review. I hope you guys saw this year's answers and last year's answers so you could compare. I want, did you, I hope that you all observed that there was a definite change in our numbers as far as like attendance and circulation. We, because it had to all do with COVID because our library was at a more active status than 2020. We, in 2020, we had to close down for three months and we were at service level B, I believe, for a long time. And then this year we were at service level C. And then we opened up to having Story Hour and Ma-Jong. This was like after the summer, it was like September, we had our first program. We had the knitters come back and Ma-Jong came back. And so this, oh, and did I mention Story Hour? I can't remember, but yeah, I think I did. But it really boosted our program numbers and we had a couple more programs and we had the tree trimming program. I'm just doing this off the top of my head Linda, so it's just memory.
Summer reading program was way up and I think the circulation was up 1,000.
Yeah, the circulation was up. We had a lot of books go out this summer. That was actually flagged on our report this summer. They had the state flags, like, when there's a big change in numbers and they wanted to know why there was so much circulation, so I had to write a note and, you know, I had to, you know, write the synopsis. And so, you know, I said, you know, we had a great summer reading program and we had a lot of kids come into the library and they checked out books. And we have new children in the neighborhood who are great readers. And, you know, it just goes hand in hand. We have Story Hour that, you know, was well-attended and they, they check out books every time they come every week. And, you know, it's just, it's wonderful, so.
I can't believe our interlibrary loan, how many items you send out into the community, that just blows me away.
And a lot of our interlibrary loaners are older books too.
Really?
My staff members will say, oh my gosh, this hasn't been checked out in 20 years, you know, or 30 years, you know, and it's, they like our older books. Yeah, a great collection of older things.
For a small library, like, we are sending out a ton of books.
We are, yes, yes. So, you know, I think this was a good year for us despite the, you know, COVID. And so, oh, and the other thing is, is that I was going to resend the report to you after Peter did his corrections, but I never got to it because of my hiccup in my life. So maybe Peter can tell you about his changes that he made to the report.
Minor, just minor little details, a couple of things I noticed. So I had to adjust a couple of numbers. But I managed to adjust them and I didn't get any questions back, so they accepted them for now until they look at them more closely, so. I'm ready, bring it on.
Good. So can I have, go ahead, Jane, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion that we accept the annual report.
Second, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion? Motion passes then unanimously. So I'm going to ask that we do all the votes that we need to first. That's under new business. And then we can talk about the collection development policy last. So we have the JA agreement that you've received through email as well. I have that here in front of me as a paper copy. I need to sign it, date it on the date that we approve of it. And I will send that, bring it to the library, and it can be sent back to Sal's through interlibrary loan delivery. We have time to do this. It's not due until April 1st, but I'll bring that this week as soon as I sign it. So any questions about the JA agreement?
Nope.
Now, can I have a motion to accept that JA agreement?
I'm making the first show the JA agreement.
Okay, Peter's making the motion, seconded by?
Patricia.
Patricia, thank you, Patricia. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to accept the JA agreement carries unanimously. And the next item on new business is a loan agreement policy. Can we do those both together? Jennifer, do you think?
You probably could, absolutely.
Okay, so we have a vote on the, I don't know how to say it, Jennifer.
Gembe.
Loan agreement and policy and on the ukulele loan agreement and policy. These are two musical instruments that the library now owns that we are going to be loaning out to our patrons. Again, we've received copies of these agreements that Jennifer's written. Are there any questions or comments about the policy, the way it's written?
Oh.
No, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept those policies, please?
I'll make a motion.
Patricia will make a motion or second it.
All right, I got.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Patricia's making motion, seconded by Mary Jane. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously to accept those two loan agreement and policies for the musical instruments. So that brings us to the review of the Eastern Library Collection Development Policy.
Erin Gabriel always wanted us to have musical instruments on loan. So if anybody runs into him, we should mention that we now have two. He'd be very happy.
I think that's a great idea. Yes, I bet he will be happy. We should make sure he knows purposely. Maybe he'll want to borrow them even, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So how do we want to handle the library collection development policy? It is new business. We did Jennifer sent you a copy of the current one that we have and some suggestions of other policies. Any suggestions about how to tackle it?
I see Sarah sent some a letter with the red items in red that need to be added to the policy.
Yes, yeah, her suggestions.
Yes, I think we're gonna have to, you know, add these to the policy, not all of them are in there.
Okay.
So I don't think we're gonna be able to approve it tonight.
Oh, no, Peter, I didn't expect that. I expected we'd be reviewing and rewriting it and then bringing it back again in a new rewritten form again.
Was was that the salon? Was that what Sarah sent us?
Well, there's the salon part of it. We've got the library bill of rights, which is another one.
Okay.
And we've also got the items in red with collection development policy. So there's three. And then the fourth thing is she sent a Skylerville Public Library collections policy for us to look at.
I didn't print all of that, so I'll have to go back and print some of that. Okay.
Yeah, I I think it will require a lot of reading, printing and comparing them side by side. You know what we already have, what we're missing. And what we wanted to say, what I found really interesting that a lot of other libraries have, and I realize now the importance is this challenge part of the policy. So a written form that if somebody comes to challenge some of the literature that we're carrying, they're asked to document what they're objecting to and the reasoning and it gives the board a chance to review it and.
I think we have that form, right, currently?
I think we do, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen it. And I I know we've, it's only been used once, I think. But yes, that that they fill out that form if they're challenging an item, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I think I think this is gonna require a lot more work than some of the policy reviews that we've done. They all require work, but I think this one is going to require more. But not as much as the one that Patty and Chelsea did with Jennifer. That was the disaster.
Holy, holy, that was months.
We are prepared.
That was many, 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 many pages long. So I think it's important that we review this carefully so we're prepared in case anyone has any objections that we can review it and discuss it with some thought.
Yeah.
So does anybody want to work on it?
Who wants to work on it with me?
I can, I think I have half of it. So I I also have to do some extra printing. I can help.
Yay, thank you for.
You're welcome.
We need, we need somebody else.
I'm gonna pass on it because I've got to do income tax form for the state, Form 990 E easy. And that's a pain. So
Okay.
I know that's gonna take me a while.
Okay.
When I get that done, I can get back to you and see if you need some more help. But until I get that done, that's a priority.
So I think due to just personal circumstances that a few of us are dealing with, how about if we say that we will revisit this, not at our next meeting, but the following one? And that will give Jennifer and Patricia about two months to see if they can make any headway on it. And if it's not finished by then, of course, we'll just continue to work on it. But I wouldn't expect it to be done for the next month. Jennifer and Patricia, what do you think about that?
Sounds agree.
Okay.
Gives us some flexibility.
Right. Is everybody okay with that? That we'll revisit it in about two months' time?
Sounds good. Jennifer looks, I think Jennifer's got to be tied up between her mother and Cliff in his operation.
So we'll, 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 we'll say that the two of you are working on it and I will revisit it in two months.
Perfect.
Something to do at home.
Yes.
Time.
And I don't have anything else unless we have some additions to the agenda at this point.
Just in terms of the nominating committee, I know, Linda, you said that we wouldn't mention any names tonight, but the nominating committee met and we've offered, well, Nellie offered and we had somebody agree to put their name in nomination to serve on the board. And in our, at our annual meeting on March 22nd, if we, are we gonna stick with that as our annual meeting, March 22nd?
I didn't even know we had a date. Okay, I'm foolish.
Did we? I had that in my notes. I don't know why I did.
Okay, let me look.
But that doesn't mean we have to have it then, because why did I write it down?
Well, that's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I have it down as March 22nd on a Zoom.
Really?
Yeah, we had, we had, we talked about whether we wanted it in Zoom or in person.
Oh, right.
We, I mean, you know, we can, and we also said we were flexible to change it. So now would be a good time to revisit that and see if we still like that or want to change it.
Why are we doing that on a Tuesday?
Sorry?
I said, why we, why did we pick a Tuesday? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know.
I don't know either. With, didn't somebody have a conflict or something?
Hi, Patricia won't be around on the 22nd.
Say it again.
I said, Patricia will not be here the 22nd.
And that's a Tuesday? Maybe we didn't look at the calendar right.
Right.
Maybe Chelsea said she couldn't make it on the 21st, so we went on that Monday. So she said she can make it Tuesday. We'd have to check with Chelsea on that.
But isn't Chelsea's last, isn't this her last meeting? Because I thought it was February she was done.
Yeah, I think you're right.
But she should be there. Shouldn't she be there for when we get the new board member? Doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be. And tradition, yes, tradition, we used to thank the person that was leaving and, you know, make a gesture of appreciation. But I don't know how.
Things have not been traditional.
Not for three years now or two years. I don't.
I know. That's why I do want to suggest that. I do want to suggest that we take that off Jennifer's plate and have an untraditional annual meeting and just take that off your plate, Jennifer, in terms of making a community report and that we can use the statistics and things off the annual report.
Well, unfortunately, as nice as that sounds, by by library, I guess, public library law, I can't, it has to be, you're required. That's one of the things on the annual report that I have to check off. That it's got to be a written report to the community. So it's a, it is a requirement of the library, New York library system.
Okay.
So.
But it doesn't have to be a slideshow. It doesn't have to be, you know, it can be totally reduced to a, you know, a narrative.
Yeah. It's funny, Jack Scott said to me the the other day, he's like, wow, he's like, I saw your, your annual report from last year. He's like, wow, you really wrote a lot. And I said, well, aren't you supposed to write that much? He's like, wow, typically people don't write that much. I was like, oh, okay. He's like, but it's one of the best I've ever seen. And I was like, wow, thanks.
Kudos, kudos to you, Jennifer.
But I said, I don't know what I am doing. I said, I'm just like winging it. So, but yeah, I guess I'll have to just streamline it.
Well, that's something that you just.
Give yourself permission to just streamline it.
Yeah.
Right, like that's something that you just gave us was really wonderful to like pull those highlight, I mean, give whatever statistics you need to give, but then to just pull those highlights out. Fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I I agree with both of you. We'll try and keep it as simple as possible. I just read in some newspaper, the annual report from my local library, and they did something very similar to what Jennifer did, just talked about, you know, the highlights of the year and how many kids, not how many, but that there were different meetings and I think Jennifer tried to make it as simple as possible, still following the letter of the law, truly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wrote the same report and it was done in a, in a regular meeting, too. So it seemed like it was just a combination of a board of trustees meeting and a annual report.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I would think that we can do the same thing. And so maybe we should readjust our date. I don't know where we got the 22nd from, but if we're all in agreement for the 21st, that would be Monday. So it would be a normal meeting. Jennifer, I know you can't tell for sure now, but how does that sound? The 21st?
Yeah, that that would be fine. That would actually be better for me because close surgery is the 23rd. So the 21st would be good.
All right, and.
That the 21st would be both an annual meeting and a regular board meeting. Can we combine them both?
Yes.
That's fine. I like that.
So to follow the annual meeting with the board meeting to, there's something, I forget what you have to do, but.
You have to have an organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting.
Where you just assign officers and that type of thing.
Yeah.
We'll also have to accept the new member replacing Chelsea, too.
Right.
That's during the annual meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all one happy evening.
Yeah.
Should we start that meeting sooner because we got more going on or is it?
Yeah, we want to start it.
What about you, Mary Jane? You're.
I can get home for seven.
Seven, okay.
I mean, would you want, would you want it earlier than that?
What do you think, Jennifer? I'm, I'm hoping I can, I'm retired. I can come anytime.
Yeah, it's up to the board and like who can make it. Can Patricia make it that early? Can Mary Jane make it that early?
I can. Patricia can.
So like. What about Nellie? Nellie, you're.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine. I can make seven easily. What? Yeah, I'm very flexible.
Seven's fine.
That kitty cat.
Meeting? He's like, okay, let's get this meeting done.
Can I, we got the, the new nominee for the board because they are very excited. They're eager to get started. They were wanting to even come tonight. And I, I hate to say, but I, I said, if you mind not, because we would maybe need to be talking about. I wasn't sure if we were going to talk a little bit about the nomination, you know. So he said, that's fine. Whenever, you know, you want me to come, just let me know. So.
So yes, yes, somebody from the nominating committee should invite him to this meeting. And of course, it would usually be a real meeting, but you know, in this case, it's going to be Zoom. So, yes, so it would be March 21st at seven o'clock and we'll do a regular meeting. So just to go over what I remember about this is we have a full regular meeting, everyone. I don't think we'll have much business. And then we go into the annual meeting and Nellie, you don't have to write this down, but just because you're new with this, I want to fill you in on what that means. The the annual meeting would, we would like reopen the meeting again. We'd ask for the reading of the last annual meeting minutes, which were taken a year ago. Usually, somebody has to dispense with the meat, reading of those minutes, and then we just accept them as written. Usually, somebody has to dispense with the me, reading of those minutes, and then we just accept them as written. We do the usual things, taking attendance. At that point, Jennifer would give the annual report, which would be kind of like her director's report.
Okay.
And then from there, I don't have the agenda in front of me, we usually have entertainment, Nellie, and things, but because it's Zoom, I don't think we will. But then we would nominate the trustee, so somebody from the nominating committee should have a little bio about the trustee that's being nominated and put their name into nomination, into, to be nominated. I would ask if there are other nominations from the floor, if not, then I'd ask the secretary to cast a ballot, one ballot for the election of that trustee, and then that trustee would therefore be elected to serve on the board. Do they? Anybody help me out? Oh, Peter, Peter has to give his annual treasures report.
And usually we have the friends there as well. Last year when we did this on Zoom, friends did not attend. But will.
You will invite them? Mary Jane?
I, I will, if you want me to, yeah.
Yeah, that would be good to reach out to them, just to let them know it's a special meeting, not our, you know, not a regular meeting. If I could figure it out, I would love to be able to tell you, we'll have a regular meeting from seven to seven thirty and then start the annual meeting, but I don't think I can figure it out without knowing what business we'll have to do between now and a month from now.
Lynda, can I suggest that we flip it and have the annual meeting at seven o'clock and then adjourn to go into a board meeting afterwards?
Yeah, let's think on that just for a minute, Mary Jane, if that makes sense. I'm just trying to think if there's any reason that wouldn't work. Well, the reason, the only reason that wouldn't work is that after our annual meeting, we have to, to run the next meeting, we would have new officers.
Right, right.
So we then have to have the organizational meeting before the regular meeting? Oh my goodness, I think we better think this through here.
Yeah, that's what they used to do, they used to, you know, the annual meeting kind of grew as a separate event and as sort of a community participation over the last 20 years, but there were times where the public didn't come, there was a, you know, group of people, say, seven people, they would have their annual meeting, and then they'd go right into the organizational meeting, they'd select the officers, and then they'd, they'd go in to have a meeting. So it'd be like annual meeting, organizational, and then get into new and old business, yeah.
So that, that was my question, is so there, we're talking about like three actual different meetings, a regular meeting, an annual meeting, where we get the, which I get, the annual reports, but then the organizational meeting, is that basically just the nomination part?
No. Go ahead.
It's, it's, it's to organize the year ahead, so the, the group would set what dates that, what, when we're, our meetings are gonna be held, are they gonna continue on Monday, does that work for everyone, does that work for the new trustee? Do we have, we used to do like an official newspaper, you know, who was going to carry the news, where we were gonna publish it, and then the officers as well. Mary Jane's probably gone and run off to get her annual meeting for us, so we can.
I'm listening, I just have to deal with my pad.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were helping, I thought you were gonna deal with helping me figure out what we have to do with that organizational meeting. But that was basically now, is what we do, we just kind of set the, the precedent for the, on next coming year.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense.
The time, you know, the time of meeting, are we gonna, you know, the time and the day of the month that we're gonna meet.
Gotcha.
It organizes, it organizes things.
So it seems to me like that part would need to go last, after you have your new trustee in there and, and a part of the reorganizing of it, I would think.
It, although what Mary Jane is saying is we could do a regular meeting, like this could be our last regular meeting under this administration, we'll call it for lack of a better word, and then, then we'll have our annual meeting where the new trustee would be elected.
Got it.
And then after that meeting, we would set our organizational meeting to organizing the upcoming year to elect officers, and then at the next meeting, which would then follow, our, our new meeting would be run by the new offices.
The officers. Gotcha.
That was, that was gonna be my question, Lynda, because is there a reason we need to have a board meeting on the 21st? I mean, is there a reason that you would have to meet and have, you know, an organized board meeting that day?
Not unless you have business for us to attend to, you know, it's always driven by what business do we need to do. As far as policies, I don't believe there's anything that we are working on right now that needs to be talked about. I don't know if you will have anything for Sal's, your annual reports done, I don't know if you'll have a big expenditure, or, you know, it always is driven by what you need us to vote on.
Okay.
And what business we need to trans, you know, transpire.
Okay.
I don't foresee anything, oh, anything about the school and the taxes and the money, that would be the only thing that, and I don't think we have to do anything as a board about that, that's being handled.
Right. Well, once the signatures are done, they have to be into Troy Tyler by the 31st of March, correct?
Jennifer, I threw out that date as remembering that date from the past, I don't know if that's the date this year.
Okay.
And I mean, I, it's my birthday, so that's how I remembered it. One year I had to drive up there on my birthday, help your skeleton to get it to him on time, so that's why I remember that date.
Oh, boy.
But I don't know if that's this year, I'm sure it must change each year depending on when the school board vote is.
Peter, could you find out from Troy Tyler, because you have a relationship with him when the signatures are due?
Now, when, do I, do we need to pick up what the signatures from the Greenwich Library and take them all up at the same time, or would Greenwich be taking theirs up and then we take ours up?
It's been done both ways. At one point, we brought them all together, the last couple of years, we brought them separately.
All right.
It doesn't matter really, as long as you get them, as long as we've got our 25, you know, and we'll have to trust them to get theirs. So I think, Peter, it would be easier to arrange just to bring ours, then you don't have to mesh with somebody else. I think it's just easier this year.
Okay, all I need to do is, if Jennifer, you or one of your staffers can let me know as soon as we got our 25 signatures, probably won't be long. So what I could do is call, talk to Troy, find out, and then I could bring it up there, drop it off.
Okay, all right.
Right, yeah, we just need to know that date when it's due for sure, we don't wanna be late with that.
Nope, I'll get it up there as soon as we got 25 signatures.
Okay. And Jennifer, I know you're not gonna be in the library, but maybe you could ask one of the staff to keep an eye on that, and if it's getting close to Peter's due date, we may have to put out a call somehow to get people down there to sign it.
Okay, oh boy, all right. Okay.
So, you know, I would really appreciate it if all of our board members could stop in and bring your spouse with you and sign it. Or whoever.
Oh, good.
So I guess then, Mary Jane, Peter, and Pat, what do you think? Should we not have a regular meeting on March 21st, just do the annual and the organizational?
And probably simplify it.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me too.
I would think if something comes up, if Jennifer says, hey, red flag, you know, we could always.
Add it on, Nellie? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So it's just gonna be an annual meeting at this point?
An annual meeting and an organizational meeting, we'll have both the annual and the organizational meeting on the same time, and again, starting at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
And I will try to get the agenda together, and I'll send it to Mary Jane and see if she wants to approve it and make sure that that's okay.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
And I'm going to invite the nominee to come to the meeting at seven o'clock on Zoom.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So can I ask a quick question? Who's the nominee?
We're, we're being recorded.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Yeah, we're being recorded. Well, we'll have to email it to you, Peter.
Well, when you stop recording, then somebody can, you know.
Okay.
That's not, Jennifer, no, because even though you're not recording, people can still be listening in.
Oh, okay.
It's a public meeting, anybody could be listening in right now. And. Okay.
I'm sure you did a fine job finding, you know, replacement for Chelsea.
Yeah, we will miss Chelsea, that's for sure, she's been a real help, definitely.
Yes, I think she'll still offer to help.
I hope so, yes.
Oh, speaking of help, I, I noticed Jennifer in your report there, you mentioned that Annie Miller had offered to volunteer. What about that?
She said the, towards the spring, she'd be stopping in to offer her services, so I'm just waiting.
Are there any other agenda items that we need, can we adjourn?
I, I'm frozen, can you hear me?
I can't, yes.
I can hear you.
Good, good, my video is frozen, it's so, okay.
Can I have a motion to adjourn if there's no other business?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Seconded, bye.
I'll second it.
Mary Jane, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, our meeting is adjourned, and we can stop the recording of our meeting.